And we'll actually start with pledge allegiance, if you don't mind.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and we'll jump right into our attendance roll call. Start with Bill Kamisky, James Raff, Suzanne Spelling, and I know Anthony Mullen and Sarah Winger are going to be absent today. Roddy Yogan present. Okay. Jump right into the agenda for today. We have, I think it'll be a pretty quick meeting and we're going to start with the new business portion actually today. If you guys. Oh, thank you. Sorry. So are there any comments that the commissioners had on last month's meeting minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve? Okay. Okay, no, 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 in favor. Aye. Okay. And then going on to new business, we have three items in the new business. We'll start with PLPC 2023-0005, which is for Hill Street, the discontinuance of a portion of Hill Street. I see Steve's here to present and give us some background. Whenever you're ready, Steve. Not yet. Just quickly, are the people on Zoom right now? Just so we're aware. Okay, so no. Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Woo.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
I don't know where that's feedback from. Yeah, we'll get that fixed. There's always got to be something, right?
So I'm sorry, while Eric is doing that, the first one is a Hill Street Mobility Hub. Little Italy, it's been in conjunction with the Little Italy name code, CETA. There is, there is four projects coming together, which included the CDVG retaining Fort Street and Curves. Then Little Italy has applied for, received major funding to redevelop the Little Italy market area there. And that it's a super fun, it's a hazardous site that's been, it can't be, it's capped basically. So it's not like they can do any digging on site, but they have answers to make that more of a public space as well as continuing to make that an area that could be used for emergency parking or snowstorms. The city plans to do some changes to the streets, including directional changes.
Test, test, test it. Just hold it a little further away.
I thought it was the, okay. Like a foot. Usually I have to hold these really close. Okay. Where was I? The city is looking at changing directions on Hill Street behind the new Defazio so that it will be one-way southbound. And that allows for angled parking on both sides of the streets. And changing the direction on Liberty Street east of Hill Street so that it's one-way eastbound up the hill. And that'll allow for us to build a new retaining wall, widen the street, and allow for parking there as well. And a lot of this new parking is going to offset the loss of parking by the closing down or discontinuance of Hill Street. So that will be closed down. We are still negotiating with the fire department, but I think we're just about there on what changes we have to make to this plan to allow them to be able to reach the buildings that are up there on Hill Street because they're going to be now further away. But basically, the see what I got here to show you. So this, this is what I should have had in the first place, just showing the whole area.
Seems like it's when you get close to the laptop where the feedback comes in.
Okay. Well, this will be fun to do.
Okay. Here you have the Little Italy Marketplace. One-way changes are red arrows to green box. There'll be a traffic light there. And Mobility Hub did that area. Now that triangle left is officially Liberty Park, if you go back far enough to look in the files. And we're going to expand that out toward the street. And just so you can see kind of basically, the Mobility Hub is a bus stop will move north of Hill Street, north of Liberty Street. It'll stop at this location instead. There'll be bike share, EV charging. And it's basically the place where you get off the bus and you can get to the final mile of where you're going. Let's see. And let's see, that's what it is. And this is basically some kind of renderings of what it's going to look like. There will be a lot less tree on it because the, you can get fire engine ladders. So the trees will all be smaller and they'll be more, well, a lot of the ones to the right side of the picture may, may go away in some states, but we're still in the design of that. We have nailed, again, we had two major neighborhood meetings on this, as well as we have nailed to everybody, everybody within a two-block radius or close to it. And we actually handled it, we mailed to all residents and all homeowners of all the properties as well. So it's been out there for a while. And again, it's referred to you by the city council, in case you have comments, concerns. And I don't know if you have any questions on it. It's not something like the design of Liberty Street, the Mobility Hub. I mean, it's done in conjunction with CETA. So our engineer was reviewing it when we had him. And so it's had been reviewed on those merits. On the planning commission review process, if you had to plan that. We'll see what else I have here. If there's anything else to be shown, just kind of showing some of the things that can be there. I think we're moving away from benches because of concerns by some of the neighbors. The permeable pavement, it's not something, and there'll be loading zones out on Ford so that people who can't park in front of their houses now anymore will have access, you know, to be able to load, unload, bring groceries and stuff with these working parts. And this, I'll just show you Little Italy Marketplace, just so you're kind of familiar with it. Again, there's the parking there showing kind of the wrong way, facing the wrong way on the bottom of the street. Going to redo the bungee ports to make program areas. They're still in the buy-in business. We have about $600,000, $700,000 to do that work. And then we can see there, there'll still be other stack cars in there during the winter for emergencies, no removal. And that's apps marketing, enable the marketing if you want to get more.
Steve, could you go back to the parking lot, the emergency parking? Just kind of talk, again, just walk me through what's, what's changing there?
The access will be off of, I mean, there's a gate right now. That whole Hill Street side is really a mess right now if you go up and down it. So that will be recreation of that street. Ground's going higher, how you're going to enter in and out. So there won't be an entryway in from Hill Street anymore. And the one-way arrow on that is the wrong way.
I was about to say.
It's one way or the other.
Yep.
Right? Steve, this is going to the city council tomorrow. Tomorrow night, there's a public hearing. I'm focused in the next one. So they have a public hearing. They'll hear comment and then they'll vote on it. Uh, they'll vote on it either when they're ready to vote, if they vote on it, as early as March 2nd.
James, I think your mic is off, so. Oh, okay.
Um, so, so Steve, they're looking for our input. Is that accurate or is this a separate thing?
It's, it has to be referred to the planning commission. I'll let Andy answer.
Under the city code, any change, proposed change to the official city map has to be referred to the planning commission for a review and report. So this is actually being referred to you pursuant to the code for the change of the map, which is the discontinuance of the street. However, you are free to comment or pine upon any element of what's presented. You're not limited to that, but that's, that's the technical reason it's here. I would also point out that the way the city code is written, the city council cannot act until you have provided your report to them or 62 days have passed. If you don't provide a report within 62 days, then it's deemed approved by this board. But if they are on a schedule to consider this in March, then you would have to issue a report or recommendation this evening back to them.
So does the report simply consist of action by this commission to approve it? To approve the discontinuance?
Keeping in mind, I didn't write the city code.
Sure.
The city code simply says the city council can't act until the commission's report is returned to them
Okay.
or 62 days has elapsed. So it doesn't set forth what needs to be in the report. Whatever it is, because it's coming back from the commission itself, whatever you transmit back would have to be by vote, majority vote of the commission. But it doesn't specifically say what has to be included. So I, I read that to mean that there's a reason they referred it to you. They want to pick your brain and your expertise on planning matters and they want your comments back. So utilize your experience and expertise to provide them the, the comments and recommendations you think appropriate.
Thank you.
And I would add, I'll just add in on that. This is obviously the first time we've been through this process. I don't think, you know, if you need additional information, want to take time on the report, that's fine, whether or not this, if these get adopted on March 2nd or get delayed until April, I don't believe it's the end of the world. On the other hand, if you see, see anything straightforward and not an issue, you, you know, you could easily just write or say a report. We know we approve it. We don't see any conditions, any issues.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. Open it up to the commissioners. If you just want to offer comment or suggestion for anything that sticks out, layout, additions, subtractions.
See, there are a number of trees there now. I think there's like 15 or 16 trees. Are those being removed?
I believe the big honey locust trees would be removed. The ones up against the houses on Hill Street would stay. And then the big ones would be replaced with smaller trees. I also forgot to mention, I think included in your package was a pretty in-depth traffic study from Creighton Manning. Looking at, is this going to, how's it going to impact traffic? Well, we had really only one objection. It was from the owner of Lusco Paper property, but not from the operator of Lusco Paper. Lusco Paper, they thought it was actually a benefit for them with additional parking.
I was at one of the Little Italy neighborhood meetings and
My mic number?
Yeah, so I just was saying that I was at one of the meetings and got to hear the comments of the public and see the presentation from CTA. I think it's a great project. I think it's a great use of that space. I often commute on the, on Ford and that slip lane for people coming in. It's always really scary. Seen a lot of sketchy interactions between drivers and other drivers, cyclists, pedestrians. Just a new sidewalk on that little island now. So you're walking toward yourself on Ford and you're on the east side of the street. There's no, that street to continue, you have to cross the street to sit on the sidewalk. So this is really uncomfortable now, the way it's laid out. One example that sticks out to me, if anyone is feeling like they need to see what this could look like, is on Washington, Terry Johnson in Albany. So you'd see I did a similar transit stop versus transit hub there. It's a little, it's way less permanent looking. And I think, I don't know, maybe down the line, they'll invest in that station more and keep it up, but I think it's a good way. You can see the before and after photos on the map. So, so seeing that is, is a little easing or a little, you can think like, see the impact right there. And that was a similar like slip lane situation.
I'm going to concur. I, I walk this neighborhood virtually every day. And changes on the street, ending Hill Street block early, that half a block early. And eliminating that quarter over the division, which takes cars over the second best path they make to the town. Second to take a right to across the bridge. That's a scary intersection. You said scary.
My on? Oh, so should I start from the beginning now? I'm just supporting this because I think this adds to safety. I think it will enhance the neighborhood. I think changing the direction of Hill Street behind, or next to the marketplace is a great idea too. So I, I think the whole thing conceptually is just a step in the right direction. A big step in the right direction.
I also heard the neighbor, or the Lusco neighbor. You maybe have, may have articulated that differently, writing or something like that. You know, I appreciate his comments, but I, what I heard at the meeting was very supportive for us.
Anything Suzanne?
I think it's a great idea as a driver who at one point was not familiar with how Troy works.
Probably not. Switch on the side of it. Towards the top.
Okay.
There you go.
I think it's a great project. And when I first came to Troy as a driver, this part of town was so confusing and a bit scary to figure out, you know, when you should go and you should stop, who's coming from which direction. So I think this is a great project.
Great. I, I was curious, do you guys have any comments though landscaping wise? The, the one thing I think I'd like to see in that layout is just a bit more green space and not just pavers, but I'm not sure if there is room to incorporate some of it. Especially in the Liberty Park portion. I don't have many comments on the, on the Little Italy snow emergency parking.
The a lot of this was done to be low maintenance with permeable, permeable pavers or brown cover there, but the point was trying not to make it an additional burden. CTA will certainly maintain their port of how repeated sidewalks. I really didn't talk at all about the walkability factors of this, but I think covered that. But I think that's the intent, is just treat bits inhabited minimal as possible. Just be, we have a lot of parks in the city. I agree with you. It would be nice to have big trees there and a lot of green. But just given the, the fire department requirements, the the ability, you know, we've got other park projects going on that are for active, we use parks, the ones that actually come back that will probably demand more of their time, but we'll just try to act.
Understood about like, you know, you don't want grass that you're going to have to continuously mow or, or trees that are obstructed access for, for, you know, health and safety reasons. My mind more so went to like planters or planter box and, you know, like a mulch bed with some sort of low maintenance thing in it. I don't know. Thoughts?
I like that idea. I, I mean, I know we're not like past with designing it
Sure.
and competing in design, but I think it'd be helpful to mention in the report to the city council that we support things like that. I think that, you know, I understand the fire department has concerns about accessing the buildings. But I would, you know, I encourage the designers to, you know, find creative ways to accommodate that, but also have shade, you know, large shade trees, maybe further west, further away from the buildings. I like the idea of planters that could be moved or something like that.
Even just one, I just know there's been studies that show how much more community will use the space if it's not just paved.
Yeah, I think that's like, that's a great point. And the, the productivity or like the success of the space is certainly like depending on the design. So this could happen and not be successful or happen and be very successful based on those decisions.
Steve, one other question. Historically, how has the city decided when to do more ornate crosswalk work? So whether it's, you know, stamped asphalt or like akin to what's down by Russell Sage or some of those crosswalks as opposed to just pavement striping?
Most, mostly it's pavement striping when the CDVG does their projects and they go to more ornate projects. When, I mean, Russell Sage College, I believe that was before I was here, but I think they were involved in that as well, doing that work. More, it's more when you have the time to do a larger project. That's, I'm sorry about that.
Do you see there being any possibility? The reason my mind goes to it is, this is kind of, you know, the heart of that, that neighborhood and almost like a gem for it.
This is a CDVG private area, so the Fort Street will have treatments on it. They will have some, they'll be bumped out, some other work that they were, they're playing in.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great. I think, I think that would work, maybe highlighting the report as well, the need for traffic calming infrastructure at Fort and Liberty and Fort Division. As, again, as a way to increase the likelihood of success of this space. Steve, I know, I heard what you said about benches as well, and I understand there are some resident concerns, but I, I would encourage the city and CTA to at least put one bench in that space, away, you know, not in the bus stop area, but another bench addition to that bus stop. Just for people like trying to walk from downtown to the Hill Street Park or the marketplace because some people need a place to stop and take a break. Not everybody can do that all.
Do you, do you have the, the full the, whatever submission open?
Yeah.
So on the very, very last page, I'm seeing four benches and then around each tree planter, I see that it's calling it out as, as a tree pit with surrounding bench.
Yeah, from what I understood though, this is subject to change.
Sure. Yeah, I like to see that in whatever goes there, for sure.
Comment for the report. And, and I'm, I'm comfortable with yeah, all your comments from the public, but you know, putting this report together and having the council have it as soon as. I, I, I think that's, it's depending on Eric's availability new.
And then Steve, one other thing, I think, isn't Defazio is going in to the spa or planning to at some point go into the space across from the parking lot? And is there changes? Can you go back to the presentation? I don't know if you can show us what happens on the backside right there? So.
Although you certainly could have parking spaces for parks like we do downtown, allowing them to use a couple of spaces for outdoor dining.
Yeah. Would the lot be intended to you, be used for parking for them? For that space?
No, we created so many parking spaces now on Hill Street. It's doubling what's there.
Gotcha.
And that's not used, except when there's an event.
I know we probably have some public comments too.
Sure, yeah. All right. So by all means, has anyone come today to make comment on this proposal? Anyone on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom. Okay, so in terms of generating the report, what's the best way to do that?
What I would suggest is first make it clear on your opinion regarding the discontinuance of the roadway, because that was the basis of the referral. And then any other comments or suggestions you may have, I would suggest you articulate them clearly so Eric can build a good record to transmit to them. So it's clear exactly what other comments and suggestions you have, what concerns and concerns.
Want to take a stab?
Well, yeah. So Andy, do we need, should we be making a motion or I'm assuming you can make a motion?
Yeah, it would be
To refer.
A, a motion to issue a favorable report on the discontinuance of the roadway, if you're so inclined to do that. With the following observations, concerns, notes for the record, whatever, whatever you want to characterize it that we're basically saying, hey, don't have an issue with the discontinuance, but there are some items that we noticed that we'd like to call your attention to, and this is what we think should happen.
So I'd like to make a motion that we recommend the roadway discontinuation is approved. And with, with the following notes in that the design, I, I think the concern is that the design is sensitive and the success of the space is somewhat reliant on the design. I think we should note that, noting that shade trees would be preferred and have a positive impact. Seeding would have a positive impact. Additional green spaces, whether that's planters or planter boxes that are fixed or movable.
And low maintenance.
Yeah, we understand.
Plantings.
And calling out the need for additional traffic calming measures on Fort Street so that people walking or traveling to this space can do so safely.
I would only add just general consideration that the crosswalks be something more, more decorative than simple striping, but just as a consideration for the approving agency.
More permanent.
Yep. Yes. Otherwise, I think that, that captured all the things I was considering. Anything else? Other commissioners?
No, I, I think that that covers it.
Okay.
My second.
Great, thank you. That was my next point. All right. So moving to a vote, vote Bill. James? Suzanne?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Thank you. All right. So the next item is for Canal Street, which is also a discontinuance. Steve, if you want to take us through that one as well.
Still using that?
Got your all my gathering.
Eric, would you mind minimizing the ribbon on the right side of that or the panel?
Oh, yeah.
Did I say Aaron? I meant Eric. Okay, good.
Okay, this, this so this proposal came out of the
These funding and ARPA funding as well to expand and improve parks throughout the city. There has been quite a bit of discussion over the time of creating a greenway along Canal Street that runs from eventually that will run from the river up to the gorge. And we thought this might be a good place to start. Canal, Canal Park is, you know, I think underutilized. They shut down the street to put in a sprinkler, a sprinkler system for kids in the summer. And this is a really a proposal to start that process and start the greening of that area as well. I don't think we ever plan on closing down Canal Street in its entirety, but this is a, a good first step. Aaron Vera, our engineer at the time, had reviewed the traffic, did not think it would create an issue. We have done some further reviews of the conditions here during, during rush hour. And you know, you're getting about 12 to 18 vehicles in an hour. So it's not a significant amount of traffic that will get diverted around. I know we have some speakers here who want to voice concerns on this that may, may say otherwise. But regardless, so what this does is it expands the park out to the canal. It cleans up that wall there. It creates a five-foot, actually, it's a 10-foot trail here. Am I not seeing that?
Steve, can you minimize that side panel for us?
Yep.
Maybe zoom in.
Yeah, I gotta move stuff around to do it.
And then we're also, we're looking west. West would be up here. Yeah, west is up. Okay, thanks.
In the middle on the left-hand side is an arrow.
That one and the other one really is. Yeah, that right there. Yep, yep, right there. Yep. Bingo.
All right. Okay. So what you see here in the park, and this, and this is a rough schematic still at this point. Here is the alley. Sorry, I can't move east-west or north-south rather, but so that alley would remain open. So you would still be able to So you would still be able to come up Canal Street, take a right on the alley and exit out onto uh Madison. And uh and it allows all the people that live on Second and Third to still be able to access their garages in the rear. We spoke with the fire department about this one. They don't have an issue with it. Uh the, I mean, they'll get wherever they have to get. And uh but it's not a road they use commonly to access to exit their fire station. Um, so the other things you have here is you have a playground. I'm going to, you have a playground in this.
Playground up here, a super splash pad site here. Uh, this is a swing set. This is about a five foot trail network that runs runs through the park. And again, you have the five foot uh, this is like three five foot asphalt and this is a five foot sidewalk. So uh that is basically the plan. This is something that's been being designed right now and planning to implement that this project this year.
Is there fencing around it? And then what about what's shown on the sidewalk adjacent to the, I guess it would be the canal, right? Is and I'm guessing rail. Yeah. Right.
Again, I wasn't involved with the design of that piece, so I'm sure more of the discontinuance. And then this, I don't know if they're gonna continue to use the existing part of the street that there, or they'll probably repaint. They'll probably dig everything up and redo it.
What did what was your comment about um fixing up the wall? Let's say the, are you talking about the retaining wall along the canal?
You know, there's a lot of scrub there, trees that will get removed. Um, so I think part part of the plan is, and I'll actually, I can get the plan and report back to you all other people are thinking, but I can read any detail on that. Must be in the future. Really, the only way to get up, you know, from East to Fourth Street on the spring. So I don't, that's not gonna disappear, but that might end up having some type of trail taken on it.
Permitting wise, are you gonna have to deal with any uh state agencies to to do work on the wall in that area?
No, I don't believe so. Not impacting, we're not going over the edges more cleaning and.
So not actual structural work to the wall or anything required? Okay. Um, okay, so commit, that was everything, right, Steve? Commissioners, any comments you guys wanna do, or you wanna go to public comment first? Doesn't matter to me.
Um, I should just note that, uh, you know, I I live in this neighborhood and it's been a topic with our neighborhood association for a long time, which I'm active in. Um, so, you know, our our neighborhood did put together an ARPA proposal uh for this project or for a greenway along Canal. So I just wanna disclose that I've been a part of this uh conversation for a while. Um, but the idea of having a greenway along Canal dates back, I believe, into the nineties and maybe even earlier. There's a plan from two thousand and three um the city has, so it's not um an original idea by myself or anybody else in the community now, but just to just be open about that. I don't think it impacts my ability to uh consider the project objectively.
And 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 I would agree. It it's not a conflict of interest or an appearance of good propriety. You've disclosed that you have been engaged in discussions at your um neighborhood association regarding it. Um, you you may think it's a good idea, which is perfectly acceptable. Everybody gets to bring their own opinions to the table. Um, what you have to do is is listen to any comments or concerns objectively and make your decision in the best interest of the city and not just the particular neighborhood.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
Other commissioner comments? Nothing?
I think it'd be helpful to hear
Sure.
comments first.
Okay, so let's open it up for your public comment. Um, if you wouldn't mind, uh, why have you come up if you've, has anyone come here today to speak for this proposal? Okay, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hold it, but and stand over here.
Yes.
I haven't.
Sorry for the technical difficulties.
No problem. My name is Jeff Kelly. I live at three O two Second Street. Um, the back of my house is up against the the park there. Um, I'm four houses down from Second and Canal, so I'm right in the middle of this. Okay, um, I have a few concerns. One, um well, what what is, what parking is there gonna be for this project? You know, who, you know, if you wanna drive your car up, bring a cooler, use the park. Where where are you gonna park? Where's the park? You know, the parking that they currently with the is the park net is the part of the canal that's gonna be eliminated. You know, people would park right alongside the fence there at the park. You know, now that's gonna be eliminated. And people are gonna drive, they're gonna wanna drive up to this park. In the front of the park on Third Street, you can't park there because the fire hu- the party, the firehouse has to get their truck out. So there's no parking on the park side of that because they need that for the fire trucks. So it 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 leads to, is the parking gonna be in the canal? You know, if this is gonna be a one-way now now going south. And you come, you come from Second on Canal, turn right into the alley. I it it's, there's not room for for to to park cars, any cars, you know? So you would have to have some type of parking put in there. And the, I also believe that Canal is used, you know, I've lived down, I've lived in that house since ninety-four. And people that are coming from Waterley and take the exit off of the bridge and end up coming down First Street. That's a way to get to the east side. Take the canal straight across over to Spring. Yeah. You know, it's the easiest way. It's a straight shot, you know, for for Hillsview Heights, Emerald Greens, anything like that. This is this is the best way for, you know, to get there without having to go around block after block, you know? Is it an inconvenience? Yeah. Is it impossible? No. Um the other issues uh I guess mainly is just that, you know, um, I I'm concerned with where people, you know, will park their car and uh that it's a one-way alley now. I mean, uh, that that alley is is in horrible condition at this present time as well as Canal Street is. Um, odd holes that are just, you know, ridiculous, actually. Um other than that, uh you know, the park you know, it gets used. It was being used today. A lot of kids out there, first days in spring, there always is. You know, it, there's a lot of dogs down there. You know, it's 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 almost like a dog park, you know, every day, all day. And I don't see it getting picked up, you know? The city does a great job. The guys at DPW, I, that's not just because I work. You know, um, they do a great job. They, you know, they keep the places as up to, you know, they as as well as they can. But, you know, I stopped walking my dog there because there's just too much dog feces all over this. Um you know, as far as the splash pad goes, when that South Troy pool opened back up, the splash pads stopped being used. I, you know, I work for the water department. I notice it. I take notice of it. You know, water isn't the biggest expense when you're talking about something like that. But it was used when the South Troy Pool was closed. The South Troy Pool opened back up last summer. It it, there was nobody down there in those splash pads, you know? Um, they were only utilized, you know, on uh the the extreme days, which maybe was a total of ten days, you know, at the most, I would think, last year. Um, so I don't, I don't think it 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 a splash pad is a good reason to close that portion of the road. I think that um, I'm just against closing that part of it. Uh again, you know, being able to access the alley on both ends may not seem like a big deal. You know, for thirty-four years, I left my house, drove up to the water plant using that section of canal. And, you know, going down to Madison and back over with it adds a few minutes, you know, it's nothing you know, terrible, but it's it's an inconvenience from what I did, you know, what was there, what is there now? So, you know, that part's just a personal part of it. Again, the splash pad splash had part of it. I think the South Troy Pool covers that. If if there was an issue with kids not, I mean, drive out, put put a bus there and take the kids down to the park and drop them back off. Uh, you know, take them down to the pool and drop them back at at the park at the end of the day. If that would, you know, alleviate that part of it. There never was a splash pad there for, you know, until about five years ago or ten years ago at the most. You know, they never used that, but um you know, just uh, I guess that's it. You know, I just would uh, you know, if if you are gonna do this project, you're gonna have to add some type of parking spaces for people to go down. It is a neighborhood park. And I realize neighborhood parks don't necessarily need parking spots, but believe me, in the summertime, and I've been there for years, people wanna come up and picnic. They're not, they're not carrying their cooler for blocks at a time, you know? They're gonna drive their car there, you know? And if the, if there isn't where they used to park on Nick Canal, it's gonna be in the alley because there's nowhere else to park. You can't park on Third Street. You know, there's nothing there. You could park on the bridge, maybe on Third Street and carry it from there. But, you know, basically, you know, there's uh, you know, they're they're gonna be parking in the alley. I just think it's kind of dangerous too, because you got the kids there. Now you're gonna have people coming down Canal, taking a right on the alley, you know, and who knows what's going on on that right now?
Now, where do the, where do the uh people that visit the park park now?
They park in the, on Canal, the part that's gonna be eliminated. You know, the uh right along the fence of the park in between Franklin Street Alley and uh Third Street. You know, you park right there. You know, carry your stuff in. And uh, you know, that's what they're doing now.
Gotcha. Thank you for the comments.
Okay. You're welcome.
Steve, is there gonna be an uh entrance to the park from the west from on Canal?
From the north on Canal? No, from the well, from the west?
From the northwest corner. Like, if you wanted to park on Canal, just just past where this is gonna be closed down before the alleyway, would you be able to walk in from there?
Let me get the plans, see if somebody else.
Close to the Hudson.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
To speak?
Anyone else from the public come to speak for the proposal? If you wouldn't mind your name and address?
Um, I'm Diane Bell and um I live at um one ninety-third street. And I'm with the Osford Neighborhood Association and um, we did submit uh an ARPA proposal for um a a greenway along the entire Post and Kill Creek. And um I can understand the the concerns that the other gentleman just um presented. Um, however, that canal is a a major potential resource for the the whole of South Troy. There's very little um open space available at present for residents um in that area. And so our idea was to have a greenway that went, I think, as Steve mentioned, um, almost from the river up to Linden Park and um it's a, it's, that's a big idea. And so um this would just be maybe the beginning, we're hoping. And often these kinds of projects um are done in increments, so um, this might be the first increment, and then there would be other opportunities as time goes by to add to it. So um, I think the neighborhood, having submitted the um ARPA application, is is in favor of this this kind of thing, as long as, you know, other concerns can be addressed.
Thank you.
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
As to the green space, I mean, I would love to see it. I've lived in South Troy all my life and uh utilizing any water space seems to be, you know, insurmountable pa- thing, but uh just to go across Third Street, you have the firehouse there with no green, you know, no way to get past that firehouse. You know, with the road right there. I mean, there is no way to connect the park and going towards the gorge. I don't know how that would ever be unless you're gonna close that road too. You know, which I don't think you plan on doing, or I don't know, maybe that is in future plans, but there's just no space between the firehouse, you know, it's just canal right there and then the canal. You know, so I don't, you know, I don't see how you could get past that. You know, they just, they just redid that firehouse. I don't know how many millions they put into putting a new new floor in there and uh, you know, and you know, the place looks great and I love that firehouse. It's uh, you know, it's it's a beautiful piece of architecture. But, you know, I just fail to see how you can get up to the gorge. You know? Maybe after that, but, you know, I mean, what are you gonna do? Jump down into the gorge till you go by, you know, the next block, or is it some way going the other way? No, I mean, I I I would love to see it, but I I can't. I can't see it.
Be expensive, but perhaps building a cantilevered promenade off the sea, off the Post and Kill Wall?
Um, I just, yeah, and that's not what's in front of us now either, you know, we're not.
Well, this is the first I've heard of actually trying to connect the river to the gorge, you know?
Right.
You know, which is, I I I I can't see it, you know?
Talk to your uh your fellow commenter there, that may.
That again, you know, it'd be great.
So I'm gonna get back to the the openness of it. You can see there's, on the top of the picture, there's a fence that runs along the alley and then it's open at the existing Canal Street. There's no fencing running east, west until you get to Third Street, and then it's basically open at both corners where the paths come out and there's fencing in between. So it's more or less, it's an open park with kind of some safety fencing there. No, propose. Right now it's enclosed entirely with pinwheel fence.
Yeah, I would, I would describe the um the feeling of the existing fence as a cage. It's it's a very tall fence and there's only one opening, so if you go into the park and, you know, somebody else comes into that space or there's only one way in and one way out, um, besides, I think that somebody in the community has cut a hole on on the backside because there is a. Yeah, right. So this, this um, the co- I don't, can they, they can see the concept on the other side of the screen, right? Yeah, I'm, from what I understand, I mean, this concept would allow people then to pass through the park and could activate that space more instead of making it feel, when I've been in that park, it feels like it's a one person's ye- almost like a yard. It it feels like one person makes the space feel full and uninviting. Whereas when I'm looking at this concept, it feels like you could pass through, you know, on your, on on a walk or something like that. So if you're walking your dog through it or walking with your kid or something like that, um, it adds a little bit more purpose to the space, a little bit more utility to the space from what this plan shows.
So given that it's open, um, not closed in, I'm I'm assuming there's no specific like hours that people are allowed or not allowed to be in.
Yeah, as all parks, it'll be sunrise to sunset. It'll be closed in the evening.
Okay, good. The, one of the considerations I had was lighting along the walking path. If you were trying to go, say, from the avenue uh down towards the firehouse, potentially wanting lighting along it um more so a- along the canal edge.
And I don't think, even though I said sunrise to sunset, the intent is to enforce the prohibition of anybody walking along the canal.
And that's why I'm thinking about.
And I don't know what the lighting plan is for that.
Um, and then Steve, did did you have thoughts or anything you wanted to comment on regarding parking for the for the space?
My only comments or echoed uh mission of rats is that it's a neighborhood park. You wanna get something there, you pull up in front, you you can unload it and drive a half block away and park somewhere else. Uh, but otherwise, that I think is mainly gonna be accessed by just people from the neighborhood.
Okay.
So I I wa- walk this this neighborhood every day. So I, I wa- walk this, this neighborhood every day. Um, just on my way here this afternoon, I was traveling on Fourth Street North and, uh, somebody in a, a, a vehicle was coming out on Canal at Fourth and couldn't see a pedestrian and like slammed on the brakes and like this big dramatic conflict of, of near miss happened, uh, right in front of me. And that's, you know, two blocks away from, uh, from here, but, you know, Canal Ave is used as a cut through and, uh, you know, so, someone safer better or worse, and that, you know, my, my opinion is that that's for worse. I think, you know, if you're trying to get up to the east side, you could use Hill Street, you know, if you're coming from Waterfleet or something like that, you could use Hill to get to Spring or you could stay on Route Two and just go straight up the hill that way. Um, and, and yeah, I think, I think the way, the lack of infrastructure on Canal now, um, is a concern for the existing conditions, so.
While there are, while there are alternatives, do you think that this drives congestion towards other parts, other areas?
Um, last time I checked, the A A D T on the, on Canal Ave is less than six hundred fifty cars per day. Um, which might not, might sound like a lot, but in context, it's very, very low. Um, so I don't think, I don't think congestion is a, is a major concern on a lot of the C streets. In fact, I think, um, the lack of, I don't wanna go down a rabbit hole, but the lack of congestion in, in downtown has negative economic impacts as well that we could talk about a di- a different time. Um, but my answer is no, I don't, I don't think, you know, for, for Steve's count saying, what was it, Steve, like twelve cars during rush hour or something like that? So that even twelve or eighteen cars displaced onto Route Two or Hill Street is not going to cause noticeable congestion.
Um, and then one other question since you live in the area. Are there currently waste bins or trash cans where people could?
I believe there's one, there's one way bin in the car, in the, or in the park, um, I think. And, and it, it has changed, like, I think there was one there five years ago and then there wasn't for a couple of years. And I think maybe with COVID and the need for green, green spaces becoming, the need for green spaces becoming more obvious. I think maybe it was added back in or something like that.
I can imagine this being a magnet for dog owners wanting to, you know, bring their dog out and use it as a bathroom for the dog.
Yeah, and to the neighbor's point, I've seen people like close the gate with their dog in there and like, it's just them and their dog, um, like a dog park. But, um, I've seen it used more frequently, people picnicking and that sort of thing too.
So I'm wondering if there's, you know, I'm not a landscape architect, but if there's some sort of, uh, treatment or surface where you could designate an area to encourage people to use that specific part, so you're not having, you know, dog feces all over the park or, um, you know, just kind of trying to isolate it and giving people a few locations for, uh, waste bins or trash cans. So that they don't have to walk far and, and that you're not, again, just to encourage it staying clean.
Um, if, if parking on Canal is some, like, like legal, something the city can, um, allow, maybe like marking out some stalls on the, the west side of this, um, so that, you know, people are, are directed. Um, so they would come in off first and before they turn onto the alleyway, they would see, oh, I can park here. Um, and then I think similarly on, on Third Street, like there is a big hashed out zone for, uh, the fire engines to make their turn into their space. Um, so obviously that would, that would need to be rehashed or there has to be some sort of treatment there, but yeah. Outlining where people can park, um, to alleviate those concerns, I think, would be helpful.
Anything else, Bill, Suzanne, I think we've talked this one through?
I think there's been more wise words through this microphone than there has been on any night where I spoke, but, uh, come on, James, it was great. They, I, I would just say this, I think that I can understand the issue about parking, but I, but I'm in the neighborhood all the time too. And I think that there is, uh, a lot of street parking generally available, not within a, a big distance. You could br- drive up, there's more entrances here from both sides to be able to access the park and bring your, bring, um, your picnicking in. The park itself right now is pretty dismal, I think any improvement to that park and to that neighborhood would be a plus for the city and for the folks who live there, so, um. I, I think the loss of the traffic and the parking concern are outweighed by the improvements that this would bring to a, a park that the kids, people in the area could use, so that's my thinking.
Makes sense to me, so if I could ask for one of the commissioners, anything else, Suzanne, uh, to make a motion akin to the last agenda item? Want to tackle it this time?
Well, that put me on the spot. I don't know what, do we have conditions?
Not conditions, just recommendations for inclusions probably or considerations.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to hear what they are before I make a motion, what are our recommendations?
So mine would be, um, to include a lighting near the canal for the walking path portion, the sidewalk area. Uh, to include multiple, uh, waste bins for people to clean up after their dogs. And maybe to consider a specific portion of the space with either a different, uh, grass or a specific whatever treatment that makes sense for pets, to encourage people to use a, a isolated portion of the park for it.
Or, or perhaps putting up, uh, containers that have bags so that people who do happen to be there and don't have a bag could use those.
Yep, that.
So taking steps to, taking steps to reduce trash, because there is a lot of trash there now, including dog feces. Um, would be a condition, I, I support that, so I, I'm with what he said, in terms of the conditions. And the motion would be to, to, um, I'm looking for good words.
Sure, uh, uh, rec- rec- or a- approve or recommend, make a positive recommendation for the discontinuance of Canal. With the following considerations, notes, observation.
So moved with the following, uh, conditions or recommendations. We would recommend, uh, that they consider the addition of, what do you do, do we have a number in mind for trash bins or something? Multiple, at least two, uh, trash receptacles, um, and, uh, lighting along Canal, no one else was seemingly opposed, that would be mine. Um, and then I'd also add, you know, because it's not just dog feces, dog pee can kill lawns and grass. So maybe, uh, s- special treatment or a special, um, planting, maybe a, a type of grass that's more resilient in a portion of the park where pets would be encouraged to use.
I just wanna include the, um, delineating parking on Canal Ave west of the site. To the neighbors' point.
Say that again, sorry.
To the neighbor's point.
What about it? You wanted to do what? What was the inclusion?
I, I, I think that during, throughout the design process, they should explore delineating parking, marking parking on Canal Ave west of the, the roadway that's being, uh, discontinued.
That makes sense.
D- delineating it or marking it, so, um, you, you know, if you, you might see little hash marks on the street and other, like in downtown or something like that, so that people see where they can park, so that they're not just, you know, parking wherever they can fit their car. You said people were parking on Canal Ave, so this would, um, direct people that are maybe, if they're driving to the park or trying to fish at the canal, they would see, oh, this is a place, this is marked for me to park my car here and they wouldn't be.
Division Cal accepted, no restrictions, restrictions on parking.
Right. I'd be happy to talk about it.
Okay, I think those make sense to me. All right, and so moving to a vote, Bill, James, Suzanne, and I also vote yes.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just add for the public's benefit, uh, this is a recommendation to the city council only. Ultimately, the city council, uh, will be the one making a determination both on the discontinuance as well as the designs of the park and the design concerns that you raised this evening. So I would encourage you to, uh, find out from Commissioner Strickman while he's here when their public hearing will be held, so that even better, so, so y- your comments would actually be heard by the actual decision makers, so, but thank you for coming.
Thank, thank you, yes, sorry, I, oh, no, all right. All right, um, Steve, I think that was it for your items, okay? So moving on, our next item was for PLPC twenty twenty-three zero 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 four for five oh four Broadway Ave. Uh, the applicant's Finney Design Group.
While, while we're waiting for the applicant, um, I just wanted to disclose to the board that we had received, you'd received a, a letter concerning this project from Albany Management, um, which is a neighboring property owner. Um, I am a tenant of Albany Management, um, at one of their locations, uh, over in Albany off of Wolf Road. So they are my landlord, um, in fact, their, their office is actually right outside my office window, I look at them every day. Um, but I did wanna disclose they are my landlord, won't have any bearing on my ability to objectively advise you, but I just did want to disclose.
Thanks, Andy. No problem.
There's a, one of the other neighbors, I think, who didn't wanna speak during the public forum. He's now maybe going more sort of not, not. Yeah, yeah, I think in general, we're very generous, it's, it's hard because like sometimes. Can the folks, can the folks in the back here?
We honestly need to have him on the mic though for the recording, for public record.
No, is that okay? I think that's, okay, sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, so I have a meeting tonight, Tara Borden-Garzo, um, Aaron Patacula and Kelsey Carr from Mobella. Um, we're here to present five oh four Broadway, um, we have recently purchased the building, um, Finney Design Group's purchased the building are intending to, uh, completely gut renovate that building for the purposes of, uh, restaurant and office space, uh, for ourselves and also a mixed-use tenant on the ground floor or on the middle floor. A second, get that started. It's the zoom here.
Comes up as Unity House right now.
Hmm, so it's, it's previously Unity House, we purchased the building from Unity House.
Gotcha.
Uh, we just recently closed on the purchase about, uh, three weeks ago. I will share the screen. Okay. There we go. Okay, so I'm sure, um, I'm not sure if some of you have seen the, uh, presentation that we gave or the, the package that we gave the planning board, uh, earlier in the month. Um, our intent is to basically renovate the entirety of five oh four Broadway. It's currently, uh, an existing nineteen-sixties, uh, pancake office building, pretty nondescript. Um, the building's actually structurally in very good shape, uh, cosmetically not, um, so our intent is to, um, basically create a net zero building, uh, renovate the entire building to be net zero. Um, we are going to, uh, hopefully with this project set a precedent for how cities and towns can revitalize some of these existing aging infrastructure buildings that were built during the fifties and sixties to replace buildings that were previously more historic in character. Um, again, I mentioned it's gonna be net zero, um, we will be utilizing solar on the entirety of the roof. Uh, we'll also be tying into local community solar, uh, uh, partners in the area, uh, to provide the remainder of the solar function. Uh, we will not be, we will be connected to all the existing utilities in their current state except for gas. Obviously, we wanna be net zero, we can't be connected to any fossil fuel burning equipment. Um, so we will, um, basically be reusing sustainable structure and hopefully feeding some, uh, some power back into the grid by the power that we generate. Um, we will be keeping the existing building envelope completely in place, we're not going outside the building envelope and actually on the ground floor, we're reseating the building envelope to create some outdoor dining space along the street, uh, for the seasonal months, uh, also along Union. Um, we will be, uh, utilizing a, a, a construction methodology called mass timber construction. Uh, mass timber is basically a sustainable alternative to steel and concrete construction. That will be, uh, essentially leaving the existing first two stories in place, we're gonna be adding a third story on top of the building, basically. Um, with, uh, utilization of mass timber technologies and also, uh, solar tuned glazing on each side of the building. We're in the process of studying that right now, so each side of the building is likely gonna be triple pane glass, but it will have different coatings and films on it to accommodate the different solar angles, um, to keep the heat gain in the building down. Uh, can everybody see the site plan okay, just as an orientation? Um, we're on the corner of Broadway and Union, Broadway's at the, uh, kind of lower bottom of the page and Union is kind of running, uh, north and south on the page. Um, it is our intent to essentially keep the, we're not gonna expand any, and we're outside of the existing square footage. Um, the ground floor will be, uh, like I mentioned, a restaurant usage, it'll be the main entry to the building, uh, which we will, um, use to service the upper levels of the building by a new elevator currently building does not have one, uh, and the stairs are not ADA accessible or compliant, so we'll be renovating all those, uh, to, to decel. We could click the next one here.
If you go into view.
Yep, I'm gonna do that right now. There we go. Yeah. Okay, so, uh, we've submitted the entire site package, but I'll spend a little more time kinda going through our floor plans. Um, so as you can see on the, on the ground floor, uh, level one, we've created a, basically a restaurant space, which is a slightly larger than some of the restaurant spaces that are immediately adjacent, uh, we feel a confluence that area in the neighborhood, um, pretty well. I've got some potential tenants that we're looking at to take over that space. Uh, on the front of the building, we'll have some outdoor dining, see the existing building actually flushes fully on the street. So we're recessing the area on the, on the, uh, immediate, so we can, uh, A, kinda get a little more seasonality with, so it's probably some overhead heaters, uh, but allows a, a nice wide corridor for pedestrian traffic, uh, along Broadway and then all the way down the side on, on Union. Um, we will likely be installing a canopy around the front and side of the building, um, that will cover those areas, uh, for the outdoor dining. Uh, this restaurant holds approximately about forty seats in the bar and about seventy-two seats on the, uh, on the ground floor, uh, for, for diners. The restaurant is in the back of the building, or the kitchen rather is in the back of the building. And we have the appropriate toileting facilities, including a family changing and restroom, uh, at the rear. Um, we are actually in conversations with, uh, Rosenbloom, who's gonna, who's, uh, potentially developing the eighteen-eighteen to, uh, combine our, uh, refuse and trash disposal into one collected area along the backside of Union, which is a- advantageous for them and it also works for our restaurant, uh, refuse collection, um, in the back of the building. Uh, on the, uh, level two, um, it's basically gonna be rentable office space. Um, we, uh, currently do not have a tenant, however, we're talking to several, uh, companies that are like-minded businesses to what we do as architects. Um, this may end up being, uh, one of our consulting engineers, uh, we were talking with a few people about what that space may be. Right now, it's, it's programmed to accommodate the proper amount of toileting, uh, and then obviously the accessibility with the new elevator. So the third floor space, uh, is actually gonna be, uh, Finney Design Group's Troy offices. Um, because of the fact that we opened up our, our Troy office, uh, roughly about almost four years ago now, um, our business has grown pretty substantially and we've outgrown our space, which is a good problem to have. Um, we, uh, we knew we were gonna need to have space eventually, uh, we didn't expect it was gonna happen this quickly, but we're really excited about the, uh, the opportunity to take over this building, make it something that, that, that we and the city can be proud of, uh, overall aesthetically and do the right thing from a environmental standpoint. So we have about, about forty-five hundred square feet of space that we will be taking over, uh, likely gonna have, um, ten to fifteen employees in this space. Uh, and then we have a mezzanine on the third floor, which will house employee amenity space for that. Uh and then we have a mezzanine on the third floor, which will house employee amenity space for the occupants of the building. Uh on the lower floors, likely some type of the gym or workout facility with proper showers on the on the mezzanine level. All right, so we did some elevations uh to show you what this looked like and did some height studies. Um again, the existing ground floor areas uh are basically staying intact. We will we will be replacing all of the windows at fenestration with new windows at fenestration to accommodate and meet the energy code. Especially with the net zero requirements, that's indicative of the entire building, uh not just the uh the new stuff that we're putting on top. And we showed some showed some vignettes of what the mass timber structure might look like and some of the cladding that may happen on the outside of the building. Um we're uh we're still in design development on this, so it's not been completely flushed out. This kind of gives you a flavor for what we're anticipating uh doing in the building.
Can you talk a a little bit about the mass timber structure?
I was gonna ask the same thing. I've never heard uh why is it ma- called mass timber?
So I'm gonna I'm gonna actually go to the renderings, then I'll be able to talk to you a little bit more effectively of the rendering. So this is the other elevation. So um this is existing, what's there right now, uh storefront on the ground floor and then storefront on the upper floor. There's punched openings down the uh Union Street side. Uh and this is what we're planning on on doing. So you start to see what mass timber looks like and feels like. Uh essentially what mass timber does is it replaces um structural steel and or concrete framing with a sustainable wood framing. Both in what's called uh what what are in terms of the columns, uh which can be uh full wood or they can glue lamps, uh glued laminated lumber. Uh and then in the ceiling, we use a a technology called CLT, which is cross laminated timber, and that forms basically the structural roof deck. Um and again, we're in the process of studying this structurally right now, but the nice thing about um about about mass timber, number one, it's a lot more sustainable than the structural steel. Um we can insert it into the existing framework of the existing building, uh and it's a lot lighter weight. So we could put this on the top of the building and not have not have significant structural concerns if we were to do this out of steel. Um and you know, frankly, it's environmentally sustainable. Um it's very difficult, very expensive um to to manufacture steel. And um we actually have uh sources for the uh the mass timber framing, which are within uh a five hundred mile radius. So we qualify for lead. We all we will be running this through uh lead net zero, uh and it's our intention to to meet all the requirements of that, so.
Well, sorry, uh what differentiates though the mass timber from just large format? This is really just my own curiosity. Uh what differentiates mass timber from just large format timbers or glue lambs or?
CLT for that matter.
It all kind of falls under the same category. There's different ways to do mass timber, whether actually be wood, full timber. Um the the difference is that it's certified to meet certain fire rating and care certificates. So.
Okay.
Essentially, mass timber is designed to have a sacrificial envelope around the core of the timber. So if 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 there is a fire, um in incidentally, we'll be fully sprinkled. Um if there is a fire, uh the outside is designed to burn, preserve the interior of the structural member, both in the cross laminated timber sections and also in the.
What what's the useful life expectancy?
For mass timber?
Yeah.
Um it's about the same as steel. I mean, it doesn't need to be maintained. Um you know, obviously, you know, if steel is out in the elements, still gotta maintain it. Woods out in the elements, you still gotta maintain it. Um this is from a sustainability standpoint, though, it's a, you know, it's a renewable resource.
Fascinating.
Yes. Um so far as we're as we're aware, um this will be the first um uh mass timber structure. Uh mass timber overbuild structure uh in the upstate area. Um there there. What's interesting is the New York City Building Code actually just amended to include the ability to do mass timber up to seven stories. Uh in this in New York City. And so we're starting to see a lot of projects coming uh spare. What's that?
That's so tall.
Yeah, i- it's amazing that, I mean, from a structural standpoint, they 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 really, it really does well and and uh. You know, frankly, we think it's kind of beautiful, so we're um we're moving in that direction. So um. All this timber is and will be FSC certified. We have to have that Ford Stewardship Council certified in order to be able to meet the lead uh requirements for that project. Um we have um. I think that, well, I mean, that's that's essentially what what we've got inside the building. Um that we still fall below the what's the permissible heights. Um we could actually put another story on top of this, but frankly, we just aren't gonna need that much space, so we wanted to stay within keeping. So. I'll flip through a couple more pictures and give you guys a little bit better idea what this might look like. This is currently the Union Ave uh street facade. Aaron was out there in the snow shoveling out the walkway and taking pictures in the only snowstorm that we got this year. And uh and this is kind of the the corner of Broadway and Union. Um so that that mass timber will be uh concealed behind the glass on the on the top level. But those timbers actually come all the way down through the building, so you have those in all the spaces down below, so it's pretty interesting. Current Union Ave side. And what we're planning on doing with the new Union Ave side. Um a lot of the um the requirements that that will make this a a net zero building that lead puts together, uh leadership, environmental design. Require things like bike rack store, bike racks on the outside of the building, bike storage within the building. Abilities for people to change and get changed in the building after they ride to work. Um and we've incorporated all that to date. So um actually, what's what's also interesting about the mass timber structure that you see here.
Before you skip.
Sure, sure.
Can you just uh go through that in a little bit more detail?
As far as what lead what lead certification is?
No, no, not at all. Uh just the like the changing rooms and stuff like that.
Yeah, so we have, we we will put a bike rack on the outside of the building, but in order to be able to qualify for for lead points, you have to have bicycle storage inside the building for the tenants. Um so we're actually looking at um creating spaces inside the building specifically for bike storage. It doesn't necessarily have to be enclosed storage.
On the floor plan now, though, right?
No, it's it's likely gonna happen on the third floor mezzanine. Um that's kind of what we're looking at right now. We have mechanical and uh that's where changing spaces are. So. You come into the building, you take your bike up in the elevator, you get off the elevator, you park your bike or hanging on the wall, and then you you change, get ready to go to work and then. Head downstairs, go to work.
There's no room for it on the first floor, then?
Well, so the interesting thing is what we will do is control uh the elevator access. So for tenants in the building. Um we'll have fab access to the elevator that will allow people to be able to go from the first floor up to the third floor, use it and employ amenity facilities there. And then back downstairs to go to work. Likely it will only be people that are in the building as far as from amenity space. So if you're a tenant in the building, you're or you're occupying the buildings. Um but you know, we envision potentially opening it up to restaurant staff downstairs as well. Does that make make sense? Good answer to the question?
I I'll I'll have a comment on it.
All right, good. So this is the Union Ave facade right now. Uh and then this just shows a little bit of a uh a a blow up of that street level uh dining area. We'll have um. Some planters there. There is a couple of, there are a couple of uh duck banks for national grid that are in the street there that, so all these planters and and seating will need to be movable. So they can access those. Um we will likely replace the majority of the sidewalks on the site. There's some patchwork out there, but we really want this to look nice. So. Across the front of Broadway and then all the way down Union, we'll be replacing the sidewalks uh up to the curbs. Um the um.
Up to the curb, you're not gonna move, touch curb?
No, no, we it's granite curbs right now and they're in really, really good shape. Um there's a little bit of wonkiness going on over by where the uh. The uh detectable warning strip is for the for accessibility on the corner, which we'll probably redo a little bit, but but in the large part, the uh the sidewalks really are. You know, there's some new, there's some old, there's some really bad, there's some heaving, so we're gonna we're gonna pick all that out and and make it all, fix it all up. Um the other thing, because the building will be uh by and large uh solar powered. Uh we are planning to install some EV chargers on the street at the first two spark parking spaces there, so we'll have about four spots potentially for electric vehicles on the street. Tara really likes that because she has an EV, so. Okay, and then uh the last one just gives you a little bit of a a bird's eye view, kind of showing you a little bit what the uh the solar panels on the roof are gonna look like and then kind of what that overlook. Uh what that overlook looks like and you kind of start to see into the building. Interestingly, one of the things that we're gonna incorporate into the building is on the um. Uh on the the level that we have uh on the third floor, our our office will be uh is a bit of a, I don't wanna call it a green roof because it won't be. Necessarily planted out vegetated, but um that will be an open air patio on the roof that can be used by our employees. We'll we'll have um seasonal plants and whatnot out there. But um that may actually um be a a accessible space. Well, right now it can be accessible accessible space for the people who occupy the second floor as well. Um we do have a lot.
On the third story.
On the third story. Yeah, the nice thing about the way that we've got things laid out right now, it's in current state is the elevator serves all floors, but we control who and what. Via the uh the fab axis, the elevator, so we can approve or or disprove whoever's using the space.
Would there be a door off the stairwell at the third floor to the to that outdoor mezzanine?
There there will. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um we have a reception area inside the main entry of that of that third floor, which will control that space basically. Um that will be kind of our front of house person that'll be that'll be administering that.
Um going back to the kitchen space for um the restaurant area, where would venting or exhaust go to?
Yep, so the venting and the exhaust is gonna come up the building and likely will go either out the roof or high enough above the existing building. We do have the ability. Um to go out the directly out the back with the vent. Um but you know, we've got to look at the at the ventilation there and make sure we're not blowing um exhaust. You know, kitchen exhaust into into neighboring properties. We have talked with uh with Rosenbloom at at the eighteen eighteen development in the backyard here, as it were. Uh and they're not planning any uh any building or development immediately up to our property line. We have about um on the alleyway, actually. The alleyway between where Ego Kids is right now, the at at five oh two Broadway, uh is actually, it's about nine feet wide. That is split basically right down the middle. Um Ego Kids actually uses the the front probably fifty feet of that as their kind of play yard. It's pretty narrow, it's not great. Um we will be replacing the fence on that. Um at the back of the building, uh on on kind of the the alley side, as it were, uh we're about eight and a half feet to to our property line there. So we've got a little bit of distance between what could be buildable in that in that back area, but we know right now that that's the that's kind of gonna be the uh the mechanical yard slash transform elevation slash. Uh dumpster enclosures for uh for the proposed development on the other side.
This is on the north side of the site.
Right. So I know eighteen eighteen's development has had some community neighborhood meetings. Have has this been brought up at all during those or presented?
This has not been presented in community meetings. Actually, um I believe they have another meeting coming up soon and we will likely be at that meeting. Um I don't know that we're gonna put the focus on this, but we'll be there to answer questions.
Sure, that's really for their development, but. Yeah.
I mean, I'd be interested to hear what the comments, you know, I I know eighteen eighteen is maybe more contentious because of the. The number of units going in and parking concerns and that sort of thing that we hear quite often, but. The mixed use building like this with fewer or no residents. Interested to see if there were similar concerns or no concerns. From Albany Management?
Yeah. Our neighbors across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't seen it yet, but I'm sure they they share some of the same concerns that everyone else does relative to parking whatnot.
Right.
Um what's interesting is that the number of people that are that were, should say were, working at Unity House and the and the people that were there. Um we're anticipating having less people in the building on the lower two floors, uh and the 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 restaurant occupancy is really more. Um evenings and weekends. Um and we know that the fifth Ave garage, we're actually several of our employees currently parking in fifth Ave garage. Uh on Front Street in the Y Lot, and then we're we're also uh likely get additional parking spaces in it's in the fifth Ave garage, fifth Street garage.
How many employees do you have now?
We have five right now in downtown Troy and we're.
Yeah, you're anticipating growth.
Yeah, I think we're probably gonna have upwards of sixteen. I think that's what we projected right now. Um we actually um. Thankfully, we were able, we applied for a grant through ESDC and also through NYSERDA, and we were awarded grants from both of those organizations. Um and that was all based on uh ESDC is basically based on number of occupants in the building. Um a lot of the grants they gave us, so um we're working with them currently. We actually had a meeting with them earlier in the week and met with NYSERDA again today to start that process. But they're really enthusiastic about this, matches really well with some of the um the the state, things the state wants to see and do. Um and you know, there there's no accident to to why we're doing this and when we're doing it.
Right. Um based on that, Eric, you brought up the letter from Albany Management, and I have a question either for you or and or Steve. Um looking at the tax map, the tax map overlay on a GIS platform, it looks like the angled parking. Um on Union Street on that alleyway is within the public right of way. The the basis of Albany Management's concerns were regarding parking. They they were making a claim that. Um adjacent land uses were people going to those adjacent properties were using their parking lot. Um and I'm just curious. If the city knows if that parking within the right of way is being used publicly or by Albany Management.
You say I don't know.
Yeah, I think I think you should. I think that would be really interesting to hear. If. You think they're being used as city parking spaces? Oh, interesting. Okay, yeah, that would be, that seems to be how it should be. Yeah. Sure, yeah, yeah. You don't have any uh off street parking proposed, right, at all? I mean, I didn't see any. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you guys offer any incentive for your employees to, whether it's a a parking pass at the Y Lot or the fifth Ave lot that you mentioned? Or like a universal acci- access package through CDT or anything like that? Oh, you do? And what about like if if some reasons in CDT or something like that?
Thanks, Eric.
Yep.
Um they'll likely use public transportation and or reason why we're putting bike racks in and 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 bike and bike storage. Um you know, we will encourage our employees to do that to the greatest extent possible. Um most of our employees, actually, um Aaron lives on on Starbuck Island. Um Tara lives in Albany. I I live in Wyandotte, so I.
Yeah, I don't.
Throw it out the backwood door.
Yeah, we're really doing well on the tech. Um, yeah, I I I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, they've they've often submitted comments, usually for larger projects. But uh you know, they do offer what's called the universal access package. Yeah. And then on the on the transportation uh notes, you know, I I would encourage you to try to find a a place on the the first level for. That bike storage. I I get what you're saying about uh, you know, kitchen staff person having a fob and being able to go up. I think the reality is that they might not uh even put those those together, that o- opportunity together. And uh you know, hearing about how uh excited you all are about meeting the lead certifications and. You know, where your where your heart seems to be, I think that would be a a good gesture. Um I'd like to see the bike rack. In a more visible location than tucked away on Union Street. I cycle to this, not to this building, but to this general area very often, and I wouldn't wanna leave it in the dark on the alley.
You're right, Eric. Good, sure.
And then I just uh encourage you to look into a different style rack, uh one that provides two points of contact on the frame. So a hoop rack or, you know, those the sticks with the little circles on them or whatever, instead of that uh swivel rack, which is. Usually pretty frustrating for people to use.
Right, right, right. Um yeah, and I think if you can park the bike horizontal to the rack or parallel to the rack rather than having it stick into the right of way, that's the top of some more advantageous. I think, you know, and again, I don't I don't know, we haven't really talked about this, Steve, but I don't know what the the city's pension for putting a bike rack, you know, Jason to a tree or a tree planter. We have an existing, there's an existing tree right now uh that's there, that's kind of worse for the wear. Quite frankly, it's pretty diseased and we'll likely be replacing that. Um the the other part of the plan, uh we're working through this with with Kelsey and her team, uh is to include maybe some concrete planters. That can have some actual vegetation in it along the um al- along Broadway and then potentially down Union. Union's a little narrower. Um from the streetscape out, we'd really like to be able to have some on on street dining there. We do have an exit out of the dining room from uh the from the inside of the building there. Um but you know, we we're big fans of trees. We like to put as many of them as we can. Uh those planters, we planted out, we typically will hire a a maintenance company to make sure that they're they're well vegetated and they're and they look nice. And and uh it's an attractive place to be for people, patrons and also pedestrians.
Yeah, it looks like there's another vacant tree pit on uh Broadway there as well.
Yeah, we we looked into that a little bit. I think what happened was they put the national grid trunks in there. They destroyed the root system for whatever tree was there. It's really close to the duck bank that goes down, and that duck bank goes down probably fifteen or twenty feet. Um I don't know that we would be able to get a. A tree to grow in the grate anymore, but you know, it's there. We may be able to take advantage of that and put a, you know, a a concrete planter in there.
Now, if you are doing new sidewalk, you know, the pits could go.
Sure.
Wherever.
Wherever, right. Um you know, we 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 obviously want to maintain enough pedestrian circulation paths where we're proposing outdoor dining. Um i- and so that we have enough, you know, circulation there. And I know um it's been awesome in downtown, you know, working and living and and kind of the farmer's market. And seeing everybody having their outdoor dining and, you know, at PAX and and, you know, all around the the Monument Square area. Um you know, we would hope to be able to do very similar things here, but I think some of the challenges there next down, you know, we want to try and avoid that to the greatest extent possible. But, you know, planters and trees and and concrete uh barriers, I also think that, you know, concrete planters along the Broadway. I also think that, you know, concrete planters along the Broadway streetscape specifically are also a safety, you know, device as well. People parking on Broadway or moving down Broadway, God forbid, anything were to happen, you get a little bit of a barrier for the people that are potentially out there dining in the summertime. So we feel it's a win-win-win. You know, we want to put some trees and some foliage in along the streetscape and and replace any of the trees that currently are a little bit worse for the wear.
I think it'd be helpful to see more of those suggestions or in the plans.
Sure.
You know, off of the off of the floor plan, on the overall site plan, and then the next time we see this.
Kelsey, did you guys put that on your plan? Yeah, I can go back. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm I'll go back just. Yeah, it's a little. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so these are actually, these are the green squares that you see around the streetscape. That's kind of what we're thinking in terms of either concrete planters and and barriers. You know, to increase the that on the streetscape.
That's great. Could you talk a little bit about, just maybe even again for my education, what you find the value to be in pursuing the lead? What is, what value does it add to have lead certification?
Absolutely, so.
It's huge cost.
It can be. A lot of times the cost comes from having to hire a consultant to do that work. We're all lead certified professionals, so we, you know, we incur that cost as part of our business expenses. And and, you know, frankly, beyond that, it's the right thing to do. You know, our our whole practice is basically around built around sustainable design practices. Everything that we do and everything that we design is is at least lead certifiable. We don't do anything below that standard. And so for the place that we're gonna actually have our offices, we feel like we need to hold ourselves a little bit of a higher standard. You know, and and frankly, this is a, we hope to be a demonstration project for how to do this right and how to do it in an urban context with sustainable materials and that are going to last a long time, you know, in a really sustainable way. And that's kind of just how we do business, quite frankly. But yes, it is costly. It's a lot of paperwork.
So Finney is architect on it, LaBella Engineering, I'm assuming?
Correct. Site civil engineering. What what little site we really have, unfortunately.
Do you know what the, like, what are there similar precedents in with with the mass timber structure? And you said it might be the the first one in upstate New York.
I'm pretty sure this is the first one in upstate New York. It's interesting that you say that because we're actually attending a mass timber symposium in Syracuse. U S Green Building Council has a symposium they do every year at USGBC, but there's a whole track on mass timber. I was actually sitting in a lunch and learn earlier today about the precedence for overbuilding with mass timber on existing structures and how to do that successfully. So there are people that are doing it, nothing locally yet. And we're hoping to be kind of the first and like I said, be a bit of a demonstration project for other people to to, you know, help other people figure out how to do it correctly.
Have you guys had any discussion with the Troy Fire Department?
On the on the the mass timber?
Yeah, I mean, the project in general, I think it, being that it's going to be something so new. I mean, I'm I'm not a not a professional in this area, but I think just reaction, you know, for their reaction and.
You're gonna build it out of what?
And yeah, having like a serious conversation.
Yeah.
Because I know that they might be surprised. I think it'd be your best interest to to do that.
Really good suggestion. And there's a, there's a whole host of 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 data in real world scenarios where these buildings have, unfortunately, frankly, burned. They do need to have fully sprinkler, well, they need to be fully sprinkled. Currently, the building is not sprinkled at all. We will be retrofitting the entire building with sprinklers.
I don't need convincing on the on the give it. I just, I think, yeah, it would really be smart to have that.
That's a really good, yeah.
Oftentimes, you know, these projects come in, they get through the code enforcement department, they get sent to the fire department, the fire department have a comment.
Sure.
I'd encourage you to actively pursue that conversation.
Yeah.
I think that's probably the appropriate channel still, but I think, again, I think they probably want to be in the know and have a have an understanding of of kind of the spiel that you're about to give me.
Sure.
And then have you been in front of the historic review commission?
That's next.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, we obviously start.
That for portion, they did.
No, we did not. Not yet. Hopefully, that's, you know, that's where we're going next.
Okay.
Hopefully, you know, support from you guys is going to bear support from them and we'll be in good shape.
We, yeah, I mean, generally, we look to them for some architectural comments.
Sure.
For making our decision, so it'd be helpful for you to to go there. We'll get the the report from Eric and hear their hear their comments that way.
Yeah, no, we we were fully aware we're gonna do that. We'll be at the earliest, at the earliest time in the agenda.
As someone who cares about historic preservation, I think it's the perfect part of downtown to do this kind of thing.
Sure.
There's nothing around it that's inherently historic except for the news building, for the record building. And I like it, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, we're, you know, it it's interesting because the part of the the reason why we we like this location, besides the fact that that Mike Finney is an RPI grad and Tara's an RPI grad. Yeah. Has really incredible views up the hill from that side that will always be unobstructed. So we're we're really excited about being able to, you know, have that view. And actually, once you get above the third floor and in that mezzanine, you got great views up Fifth. And even if even with eighteen eighteen comes to fruition, we've got excellent panoramic views all the way around that that neighborhood, which we're really, really excited about. Because we love the neighborhood too. So there's a reason why we we decided to come to Troy in the first place and there's a reason why we're committed to staying in Troy. It's been a great, it's been great for us from a business standpoint. Our employees love working here and we love being downtown, so.
Just one, one more question. I'm I'm, for my curiosity, why is the roof pitch the way it is now?
That pitch is really close to being perfect solar orientation.
Really?
Yeah. The the angle, it's, we may have to do a little bit of a stilt to get a little bit more southern exposure on the on the angle. But that that angle coupled with a slightly eastern exposure will will get us almost ideally where we need to be for solar. Unfortunately, the, you know, it's a big roof, but it's not big enough. And so we've got sure they already started the process of getting together with with local solar developers, one of which that has local fields, actually field in Postonkill, potentially another one coming up in Wyandotte, that we will tap in for community solar.
How do you, what does that mean? Do you have to physically tie your infrastructure to theirs?
Not necessarily. We basically are essentially paying for a portion of that field to offset our energy usage. So, you know, we we have about the ability to do about fifty kilowatts on or fifty fifty kilowatts of power on the roof that we have. We anticipate we're gonna need probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty kilowatts, depending on the restaurant. Now, the interesting thing about the restaurant is that, you know, no fuel burning equipment, so there's no gas stoves. There's no, there's no gas-fired pizza ovens. There's no wood-fired pizza ovens because that flies in the face of net zero. Net zero will not allow you to burn wood. And yeah, no fossil fuel equipment, so there are.
Makes me very sad.
Yeah, well, you know, it's interesting because it's it's just different. The hardest part, the hardest thing that we're gonna have relative to the restaurant is finding a chef that wants to cook on electric induction. Now, it's becoming much more popular and interestingly, and I and I don't know the exact timeframe, but but New York City is set has a ban on all new gas-fired cooking equipment in the city. I think that's actually supposed to come into fruition by twenty twenty seven.
Not if Eric Adams is anything to say.
Right, right. There's a lot of people that have a lot of things to say about it. But I think, you know, there's, you can do a lot of interesting, albeit different things with with induction, so that's that's likely the direction we're gonna go. And, you know, that in and of itself is a bit of a demonstration project too, because we know nobody else in the area is doing, you know, a completely electric kitchen.
Could you talk a little bit about the brick re-refinishing and how you're gonna get that color?
Yes, so, you know, unfortunately, you know, we like, you know, brick, like red brick. The unfortunate part of that about that is Unity House is painted inside of the building. And they painted that side of the building with the type of paint. It's really difficult to get off a brick. And then after we entered in negotiations, they added three more murals on the side of the building. So we're kind of like, really wish you hadn't done that. That really kind of sucks. You know, it it's it's great that they wanted to, you know, show their pride in the city and their pride in their location, but unfortunately, it makes it very difficult for us to do anything about it. You know, we all know how difficult graffiti is to remove off the building. This isn't necessarily graffiti, but it's just as difficult to get rid of because it's solid color. It's much just somebody tagging the side of the building. We anticipate using a a brick finish that will coat over that. We anticipated, you can see in the renderings, we showed it in gray. There's some open for interpretation on that. You know, we feel it's it's, there's some historic precedent for it and, you know, we don't, we don't like to paint brick. This is a little bit different type of coating system, which allows the brick to breathe and it doesn't just all peel off after a couple of years. It's an expensive coating system, but it's a lot less expensive than having sandblast the entire building. Unfortunately, when you when you go down that road, you end up having to not only sandblast all the brick, you know, re-point the entire building. You can't just do a small area. You gotta do it all. So it becomes number one, it's it's very expensive. Number two, it usually will degrade the brick more than just leaving it alone and recoding it will do. So we're we're hoping, I know H R C is probably gonna have some comments and questions about that as well. We'll anticipate that. But we feel that having a consistent, appropriate finish for the entire building in a in a sensitive, you know, historically sensitive color palette makes a lot of sense in this scenario. If we didn't have the gigantic murals to deal with, I think we would be talking, having a different conversation. But I think we're we're kind of hemmed in by the by a series of unfortunate events.
Well, speaking personally. I was just gonna say I'm very supportive of the aesthetic. I really like the color scheme.
Thank you.
You don't think those murals are in line with your aesthetic? Your your employees need to be reminded that your your photos.
They are, you know, and I'll be honest with you, you know, tho- those murals have have a social justice significance and and an ethos to them. And we we don't, we'd rather not paint them over, but I think it kind of flies in the face of being able to track not only tenants, but also patrons and diners and everything. We'd like to wipe the slate clean there and it's, um. So, yeah, I I think that's the direction we would like to, we would like to go rather than, unfortunately, I just, we don't want to degrade that brick. There are some issues with the brick currently around the bases, just from salt degradation. We are gonna have to do some repointing and 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 putting in new brick, but we really don't want to have to do the whole building.
Well, thank you. So are there any substantive or specific changes that we'd like to make recommendations on now? Or you guys want to just move forward? Do we need to declare lead agency on this?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
What's the total square footage of all three floors?
So the existing square footage, correct me if I'm wrong, about fifty five hundred square feet per floor? Yeah, about five thousand fifty two hundred square feet per floor, and then we're adding on another forty five hundred square feet on the on the top floor. Yep, so roughly ten and then we're gonna add another like five.
Eric and Steve, did you guys, you guys agree with my points on talking to the fire department? Do you have anything to add or or? Do you want to correct me? You know better than I do.
No, I don't I don't think so. I think it's a question for building codes and standards strictly because heavy timber is a subclassification that all code enforcement officers have to learn about. So, I I mean, it's really a structural review. And if, you know, fire department has a problem with that, they can go to Carlo.
So my background's structural engineering. I'm just, again, another education point. Sorry if everyone else doesn't want to hear it. How do you connect the superstructure, the third floor that you're adding on, is the color that you add at the base of the timbers?
So there's quite a few ways we can do this, right? One of the, one of the, we're looking at a couple of different systems. Number one, first thing we'd like to do is reusing as much of the existing structure as possible, because from a sustainability standpoint, that's the most sustainable thing to do. Why throw it out if you can reuse what's there? We've started structural evaluation of the building. We actually just finished doing some conditions on all the existing structural systems. This building is actually clear span from wall to wall, east to west. There's a large section of of joists that that span load-bearing masonry on the upper level. It's carrying the roof. Likely that's not enough to support the current code required minimums for floor deflection loads. So we're looking at some options to either mid-span that support from underneath or potentially add some additional either cross-laminated timber and or wood structural systems to to basically overbuild the existing roof system. We haven't flushed all that out yet, but like I said, we're we're gonna leave as much of the existing structure in place as we possibly can.
I'll nerd out with you more later.
Yeah, hey, I mean, we, you know, this is, we've already, we actually have engaged with the Westshore Design Engineers, Nick Nitty and his team. We've worked with them many, many times. They've they've actually done a couple of mass timber buildings. They have experience with doing it. And we're we're already starting that evaluation process while we can, while we can, you know, and again, that will evolve over time. But likely will involve some level of underside support and overbuild from the top.
Okay.
Yeah, my my only substance substantive recommendation or comment would be to see those transportation-related comments addressed.
As far as paying for parking and C D T A.
Well, no, I think you you addressed the C D T A comment, the public transit comment, but yeah, just just changing the bike rack style. Looking for a different location for that's more invisible and then, you know, exploring a location for that room for the indoor storage on the on the first floor, you know, it's impossible.
Aaron's gonna hate this.
We can, we can talk about it at the next meeting, but it would be good to hear more about the the reasons why it can't be done then.
Right, right. I I think, you know, and 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 again, we're we're still in the very preliminary planning phases of this. The kitchen is about as small as we want to make it. The bathroom, bathrooms are bathrooms. They gotta be what they gotta be, right? And they have to be a certain size. They are certainly all gonna be accessible. We definitely want to put a family changing room in, which takes a little bit more space, but we find is infinitely functional. So our other, the other portion of our business is hospitality. We do a lot of kitchens and restaurants and design of those facilities. So we're pretty familiar what what's gonna work from a functional standpoint. Also calculating the ROI, how many seats need to really be successful as a restaurant, we're kind of right there. If we, you know, we decrease the number of seats by adding a bike storage parking area, and maybe it's just a couple of spaces on the ground floor and a few places upstairs. We have the space upstairs to clearly accommodate it. Downstairs is gonna be tough.
Right.
One of the other things, it's amenity space, but it's a package room on the ground floor. We've learned that from some of the buildings that we've designed. Having that space for your upstairs tenants is absolutely critical. A lot of times, you know, the postal service and or UPS or FedEx or whatever, just dump stuff in lobby and and then it goes away.
Yeah.
So we've got a place to be able to securely store that and not have, you know, that traffic of UPS and in in and the postal service. Because both services won't come upstairs in most cases. They're gonna put it in the ground floor and it's gonna be what it's gonna be. So we're trying to accommodate that. Now, that being said, the other flip side of that is that that can function as a bike storage area, right? So I think there's some opportunities to, you know, massage this a little bit to make it work.
Yeah, it's great.
Likewise, one comment I did have earlier just came back to me talking about this stuff. The entryway, if you can actually go to the vertical elevation, the rendering elevation view from Broadway. That one, so.
Sorry.
You're good. The proposed, sorry. Yep, right there. So where the entrance is kind of to the left of the seat, outdoor seating area.
Yep.
One thing as a diner that I've come to appreciate when restaurants have it is a, it's almost like a weather break vestibule. So I'm I'm wondering what your thoughts are on almost putting a second set of doors out where that column sits for further towards us or closer towards us, rather.
And I'm gonna go back to the plan. I think they'll.
Yeah. Oh, is that already an enclosed?
Break? Yeah, so there's a, there's a vestibule. It's hard to see.
Yeah, I see it.
But yeah, there's a set of double doors. So one, the first set of doors goes into an airlock and then the second set of doors goes into the dining room.
And that's beautiful.
Yeah, the the other kind of interesting thing that we're likely gonna do or in some shape and form is that that wall, and I can't really point to it. But the wall between the the outdoor dining and the indoor dining is actually some type of banana wall or movable partition, so that can be thrown open. Kind of get that fluid indoor-outdoor, you know, kind of blurs the line between what's going on. There are challenges with that for sure with screening and making sure pest control and all that, but there are there are strategies to do that. But we feel like being able to throw open those doors and really have some good circulation, air and sound.
Been to a lot of spaces like that. It's always so nice in the warmer.
We do, so we, one of the recent projects that we just finished in the last couple of years is five fifty waterfront on Saratoga Lake. So we have big, huge garage doors that during the summertime, throw those open and get this great breeze coming out of the lake. And and it just kind of blurs the line between what's inside and outside. You know, this is to a lesser extent, but kind of same methodology.
They were just bought by Druthers, I heard.
Partnered with Druthers.
All right.
How far does a outdoor seating, is it being proposed to encourage into the right of way?
I think we show about six feet right now, so that you see those big black dots, which are the columns, structural system for the building right now. Beyond, right now, the existing face of the building comes to about that spot. So we're actually recessing a portion of the building to be inside, so get a little more indoor-outdoor seating. But the the kind of the two, four, or five tables. But the, the kind of the two, four, or five tables that you see on the outboard side is about six feet from the face of the building. That sidewalk is, correct me if I'm wrong, about thirteen feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, from, to the curb.
Yeah, you're showing twelve, almost thirteen.
Right, right.
Okay.
So it's, we, we, I mean, it's deliberate. We want to make sure there's enough for pedestrians to get around it and not be, you know, walking by and bumping a diner in the head kind of a situation. And that's part of the reason for the planters and the depth of those planters are right now. Cause it kind of creates a little bit of a, um, a physical barrier, but, but not necessarily a visual barrier.
So going back to the earlier question, you were about to say something.
Yeah, I, I think staff identified it as a type one secret action because of its proximity to the historic district. Um, so as a type one, it would require a couple of things. It would require a full environmental assessment form be provided with the application. I don't know if we have a full or not yet. Okay. So, so we need, we need a full, we need a full environmental assessment form. And also because it's type one, you have to engage in coordinated review. So you would have to identify every other, um, involved or interested agency. Um, the only thing, the only agency I can think of is because the applicant had mentioned some type of NYSERDA funding. Um, so NYSERDA funding from an agency would make them an involved agency, but they're the only ones that I identified that. Uh, send notification of the coordinated review and your intent to declare lead agency to NYSERDA. I haven't identified anybody else. But I think you, you definitely the appropriate lead agency. So tonight, what you could do is classified as a type one and declare lead agency. Staff will then, um, send a notice to, to NYSERDA of your intention.
And we have, we have contact information for all the people that are directly involved at both ESDC, which I think is also an involved agency because they're providing funding.
Oh, okay. All right, great.
So we can, we can give you guys all that, get you guys the. Um, yeah, um, yes.
IDA is also.
So, so why don't we do it this way? You guys, a motion to declare lead agency is appropriate. And then staff will work with the applicant to determine what funding sources they apply to, and they will become the involved agencies that will be noted.
And submit the full.
Uh, yeah, and we're doing a full environmental assessment.
Fine.
Put it on the Bella.
Kelsey, there you go. Steve said we only got to do the short form. That's fine. No problem. We'll take care of it.
Thank you. Okay, um, so, Messrs, take a motion? If not, oh.
I move that we declare ourselves lead agency and, um, what was the other part? Um.
I think that's all we need.
Notify, uh, the staff will notify, um, any of the interested parties that are involved in this. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to a vote. All in favor? I. Motion passes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't think we have anybody here. Well, we didn't open the public comment.
No, we didn't. Okay.
Nobody was on Zoom either.
Um, you guys want to say anything?
Anything you wanted to see at the, on the site plan next time they come back changed? Cause it seems like they did have the, the, uh, planters and everything along Union. I know that was one of the comments.
I already made this.
Okay. All right, great.
There was anybody on Zoom, right?
So thank you very much. Good to go.
I'm glad. Thank you guys. Appreciate that.
So I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. Oh, oh, we do? Oh, that's right. I am so sorry. I'm very sorry. That's where I skipped to new business. So routine, I'm, uh, seriously apologetic. Um, so we'll move on to old business, which is PLPC twenty eighteen zero, 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 three for one forty-one Congress Street.
I just wanted to let you know that if you had, you know, wanted to take a vote amongst yourselves, uh, you know, this is for, uh, approval of the extensions. If you found the information sufficient, you could, you know, approve as if it were a consent item.
Sure.
Um, but if you want to hear their, their presentation, you're welcome to as well.
I know several of us are new and probably we're looking to talk or at least see it again.
So you have somewhere to be.
While, while the applicant is setting up, let me just point out to the board that we are a board of seven members. And we have four here this evening, so that constitutes a quorum. Um, however, to pass any resolution, you would need all four votes. So in fairness to the applicant, um, if there are any of the board members currently have a concern that could lead to it being less than a four-person vote, um, in fairness, we should give the app, the applicant an opportunity to come back in another meeting when there is a larger contingent of members here. I don't know that's going to be a problem, but I would simply point to that, that there is a concern. We may want to discuss that before we go to a formal vote because there are only four of you here this evening.
In reflection. Thank you.
I think the horrible mic was a volume, that gain issue. I can't.
Oh, it's got a totally different setup. Is it on an entirely different board or does it connect?
It knows the same board.
Yeah.
It just doesn't follow the same.
Settings. I apologize for almost adjourning the meeting. Thank you for your patience as well tonight. As you've seen tonight, it is. Yeah. Okay. There's a light on it now.
All right.
On the back of it.
But I'm Jeff Smatana with the United Group Companies. And here to talk about a, uh, project you, uh, approved in, uh, August of twenty eighteen. Um, we've extended the approval, um, a couple of times just due to some of the things that were going on with COVID and um, construction cost volatility, changes in financial markets and whatnot. Uh, but through all of that, we remain very, uh, committed to, uh, having this project city station north. Occur here in, um, here in downtown, uh, Troy.
Oh, you can go control L and it can bring up.
Okay. It was going up and down instead of like, right?
And then the arrows.
Great, thank you. Um, but we're here to, uh, ask for an additional extension of the, uh, site plan. Uh, but also thought at the same time, uh, just to update you generally with where we are with the project. Uh, if there are any, uh, questions, uh, that people might, uh, want to be refreshed on in connection with the project. But as a reminder, um, this, uh, is, um, adjacent to the other city station projects that we have in the city that we own there, city station east, west and south. Uh, it's in between Congress and, um, uh, State Street there and between, uh, Sixth and Fifth Avenue near the, uh, Boys and Girls Club near the, uh, uh, police station. Um, this project, uh, is a mixed use project, includes eighty-seven market grade apartments and about forty thousand square feet of office space with, uh, a full level of underbuilding parking. Um, part of the office space will become our corporate offices. We're going to move our, uh, offices from, uh, the Rensler Technology Park into downtown. Uh, so we're going to be taking the top two floors, bringing about probably about fifty, forty to fifty employees. Uh, this is a commitment that, that we've had for many years that our principal owner, Michael Usalini, has wanted to do for a number of years. His father before him was a commitment. He wanted to see his business located in downtown Troy. And we're, um, happy that we now can get, uh, to the point of where it can really happen. Um, so, uh, there is, um, uh, existing buildings there. Obviously there's some abatement that needs to occur. Uh, we're looking to, uh, start abatement perhaps in, uh, March, uh, and then, uh, do the building demolition. Once the building is demolished, uh, there will be some archaeological investigation that will occur. And then some geotechnical analysis. We take advantage of the clear soil to, uh, do some geotech and then start construction, um, thereafter. Uh, this is a, um, a nice rendering of the building. This is looking, um, uh, uh, south, um, west, if you're, uh, like in front of the police station or, uh, actually the, um, Boys and Girls Club would be right there. So looking down, uh, Sixth Avenue. So this is the residential corner. It's an apartment there that's on that corner there. Uh, and then at the lower level there is the, the parking and you can see four stories of, uh, uh, of, uh, residential above. Uh, this is the opposite corner now, uh, where the commercial offices will be located. So, um, this is now looking, um, north. Um, and the top two stories of this would be the, uh, United Group, uh, corporate offices. Uh, this is the look, uh, along Fifth Avenue, sort of the back of the building. Uh, this is the backside of the commercial office. This is looking from Fifth Avenue, uh, east. So this is the facade of the building there. So again, the residential portion of the building to the right. And then the commercial office to the other, you can see we gain a full, full story. Um, as you continue along the street there. So we're at grade, uh, at the commercial end of the building.
Sorry, you're, you're looking which way?
This is looking from, uh, oh, I'm sorry. You're right. This is Sixth Avenue looking west. You're right. I'm sorry.
The commercials to the left and the residence.
Yes. Now this is what I had said before. This is Fifth Avenue looking east. So thanks, Steve.
And the office space would be in the commercial portion on the top two floors?
Yeah, exactly.
And this isn't fronting on Fifth at all, right?
Um.
I know there's like that one little jut out.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, there's some, there's a small street in between there actually. And then there's, we have a leg that comes down. I have a, a little site plan I could show you.
Sure. But, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't be looking at, you wouldn't see this full elevation from Fifth, right? The structures on Fifth would are separate from this.
I'm not familiar enough, uh, yeah, there are, but we would be above that, but you're right. This isn't like.
Mechanic shop.
Right. Is it auto shop? Yeah, that's right.
You can probably see it if you were in the gap between Stewart's and the mechanic shop.
I'll, I'll show you a site area over there. I'll show a little bit better, but I just wanted to go through these. So as part of the residential, we'll have a rooftop terrace, which is a very cool thing for urban, urban living, get some great, uh, views of, uh, of, uh, downtown Troy. Okay. And, uh, another view of that, uh, roof terrace, I think is a great amenity. Uh, this is, uh, inside the commercial lobby of the office building. Uh, this is inside our office space. So some of our corporate team there, uh, in that mural there. Um, this is some of the common space for the residential, kind of a clubhouse space. We have some gathering spaces for residents to, um, to get together and have, uh, socialization. And this is inside, uh, one of the residential apartments. This is that department that's on the corner there. It'd be really very nice. Nice apartment, nice open floor plans. And this is a, a view of that apartment, uh, from another perspective. I think those are all of those. Let me show you the, um, the site plan, just so we can.
Are those windows operable?
Um, I believe there's like, uh, a kickout on the bottom.
Just curious. Maybe I'm on the.
Okay, so, um, so north is to the left, east is to the top of the page. So the question there, of course, this is fifth, um, fifth down here. So there are some buildings in between. So you, you'll see the upper part of the building, but not the lower level. The entrance into the garage is off of, uh, Fifth Avenue here. And then there's some surface parking and then under this kind of U-shaped, shallow U-shaped building is the, um, is the garage park. So, um, nothing has really changed from the site plan that you originally approved. Um, we have been working with, uh, city designated engineer and some of the city departments to tweak a few aspects of it. Uh, for example, we did some things to, uh, split the, um, the sewer, uh, in case there's a split system in the, in the city in the, in the future. So we made some modifications to that. Uh, but other than things like that, the site plan, uh, the building program and all other aspects of the project are essentially the same as what you originally approved as part of the first, uh, site plan approval. So that's the presentation. We're requesting a, uh, um, an approval through, uh, June thirtieth, if that's appropriate. Um, that would give us time to initiate, uh, uh, abatement and, and demolition, allow for a little bit of uh, wiggle room, uh, should some things take a little bit longer, but I think we're in a good position to start all of that. And then just start construction probably, probably around, uh, June.
Will you go back to the fifth ad elevation? I don't know.
Oh, it seems to have.
I, I called up another one, at least. Okay.
Oh, you weren't either. So Anthony wasn't either. That was just Sarah.
Oh.
Wow. Didn't realize that.
This is the Fifth Avenue elevation.
Uh-huh.
Me?
Yeah.
No.
So, so what we're discussing is, is that none of us were on the commission, only Sarah Wenger, who's absent today.
Okay.
So you, you know, you basically have a whole new, uh, planning commissioner's. I know it's been, um, there have been other extensions that have been granted.
I don't remember ever seeing this.
Okay. Well, at least some of us are seeing this for the very first time.
Okay.
Um, and so.
I have site plan documents if you'd like to go through them.
Yeah, we, we did receive the, the site plan. Um, you know, and, and we have, I guess I shouldn't say for the very first time. I've reviewed the project before tonight, but I have not seen it presented.
Okay. I heard on the side of maybe being more brief. So yeah, I'd be glad to, to take you through whatever you'd like to, uh, um, to understand.
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe we should have a, a bit of a discussion.
Yeah, likewise, I'd reviewed this, but again, seeing it or being walked through it for the first time tonight. Um, and I kind of wanted to take a temperature into what Andy and Steve alluded to mostly, Andy about, um, or maybe it was Eric, uh, about, uh, whether or not we'd want to take action or have the full, uh, group here, some of whom may have voted on this, Sarah or, um, and Anthony may have voted on. Well, he might have voted on a, um, extension.
Um, well, I'll be, I'll be blunt. I think this project was, first came to us in, to the planning commission in twenty eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, you pointed out the, the pandemic. And I, I think there's been a handful of changes in the immediate area as well. Um, and it's, the way it's, the way it's presented now is not, not something that I would, um, approve if it were a new application, say that. I would, I would have a lot of comments on, um, how it would be, how it could be amended. You know, the way that we've analyzed similar projects over the past few months have, uh, have been quite different. And we've had a, a long back and forth with similar applicants, um, on how we can make changes. Um, Andy, you're giving me a look from across the room. All right, go ahead.
So w- w- we have to keep in mind what the applicant is requesting here this evening. The applicant is requesting an extension of a previous approval. Um, so what is before you is, is the extension request, which doesn't give rise to a review of the site plan itself.
Right.
And what, what I've previously advised the board in other instances, when variance requests have come in, when extension requests have come in, is that unless there is a substantial change to the surrounding neighborhood that would justify reopening the secret process, then there is a presumption that there is an entitlement to the extension. So.
And that, that extends to as many extensions as?
Well.
Infinite extensions or?
I- 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 it does to, to the. I- 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 it does to to the extent that the longer the timeframe becomes, the more likelihood and easier, it's easier to meet the standard of change to the neighborhood because of the amount of time that has um taken place. So and and the the longer it goes, there's more likelihood that that you'll find those changes. But I think a- 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 again, the the applicant's not here.
Sure, yeah.
For redesign.
Right, I and I'm not, I don't want to go into that, but.
But I think the the standard you should apply is absent a substantial change to the surrounding neighborhood and the character of the community that would justify reopening the the secret process, the environmental review process. There there's a presumption that the they should be entitled to the extension.
Sure.
I don't know if that helps you at all.
No, it's it's always helpful. I I we've talked about this before with other extensions. It's the same.
What I want more from in what you just said, though, is what constitutes a substantive change in the neighborhood.
What is the, what was the timeline for this application in relation to the rest of cities? You you mentioned that your entity uh United has done the other city station um projects as well.
That's correct.
And so it's maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's helpful.
For a while, the only change in the area already has been the addition of the Vicina Building. It was the only.
The news.
Say that would be a.
The news as well.
The news would be the other one.
No, the news was complete for this.
Really?
Or or underway.
Around the same, yeah.
That we've done in twenty, that's on like twenty.
I think it was around that, yeah.
So going back to uh Andy's comment initially before the presentation, I think it'd be helpful to have the other commissioners here for our decision.
So let me explain to the applicant our our discussion earlier in case he missed it because he was setting up.
Yeah.
Because ultimately it would be his decision on whether to request you to consider action this evening.
Right.
We're we're a seven member board. There's four of us here.
Right.
So for you to be granted the extension you're requesting, you would need all four board members to vote yes this evening.
I understand.
One of your options would be to um request that the board not take action and you come back to the next meeting when there'll be some more board members here uh closer to the seven.
Some of whom were in the review.
Were also part of the previous approval. Um, and it's completely up to you. You you can say, no, I'm here. This is what I'm requesting. I'd like you to vote. I think the the board would oblige you. Um, I don't know that you're that's your best course of action based upon what I'm hearing. Um, but i- it's totally up to you. Uh, you can request it. Um, I think if you requested it this evening and it was denied, it would increase your standard um for a reconsideration to come back. Um, but it's it's completely ultimately up to you.
Right.
And I would say I would fully anticipate granting them a permit to start abatement on the existing building. Regardless, I don't know. What's the, that's something that would be, they're intending to start in March, which is next one.
You, yeah, I don't think you would need even planning consent for approve for building department to give them the ability to do abatement.
A- a- and I don't specifically recall this application. It may predate me as well. Uh, but I suspect if applicant, if the demos involved, they apply for demolition approval and site plan approval. It's my understanding that site plan approval expires after six months, not demo approval. So their demo approval may still be valid.
Mm hmm.
Um, well, from our perspective, um, you know, this is a project that um has had a great deal of community and city engagement. Um, years really and many years uh in uh the process of when uh how long uh United Group has owned this property and um uh had multiple uses and got to the point of where um that we have this project, which we think in terms of the mixed use, the residential use, the bringing the jobs downtown is is positive for the city. Having more of the board here, certainly, that is a part of the process. I think it's always a positive thing. Uh, if uh people feel like that uh um that uh engagement is is uh positive, you know, we we would support that. So I would say, yes, I'm glad to at least to reintroduce the project or let me say introduce the project to the folks that haven't seen it previously. And then be prepared uh at the next meeting to discuss it again with the larger board. And obviously, we're hopeful that the city would extend it and allow us to define it. We've been hanging in there for a long time, trying to weather many storms to um be able to do this project. And we look forward to hopefully being able to make it work.
And you know, to tip my hand a bit, I I'm wanting to grant the extension um or to vote to to grant it, but I think likewise to James, I I would lean towards having the other board members here. Um, I guess I want to be respectful of the process, the effort and all the time spent to bringing the project to what what's here and what eventually got approved. Um, I similarly probably, if I was in that original process, would have had comments or suggestions for alterations to it, but I want to be respectful of what came before and and where they got it to and the reasons they they accepted in that position. So again, I think that probably from my perspective, the best approach here is to have the other commissioners for uh for action.
I would say on the other side of that, I mean, this did have a lot of public input at this meeting and the ID meetings as well. I mean, it was a long process.
Right.
Say they have had their headquarters moved into this location now that they're ready to go and look to see it have one more one more extension, one more six month extension. I think it's had enough problems. I think it came up with a very good design that's reflective of what else is in that paper that I know. I want to go back and have a redesign that's gonna end up taking three more months of planning commission meetings.
Yeah, I I I think the the move to downtown Troy is is wonderful and, you know, I think um you guys have great, great intentions and we thank you for, you know, sticking with us and being interested in bringing the project. I just, I agree with Roddy's comments that I think it'd be helpful to have uh Sarah here specifically since she was a part of that um initial conversation.
Then I I would just add primarily for the applicant's benefit. Um, wh- what I will be recommending to you to consider when you're considering the extension request um are are two primary components. The first would be um what has changed in the surrounding community, what 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 substantial changes have existed to the physical environment or character of the community surrounding project. And secondly, um, what is the uh the reasonable basis for the extensions that were previously granted? Um, you know, a a reasonable and sufficient justification for um why it has taken a bit of time and why they just need a little bit more to get over the finish line. I think those are the two things that should form the basis of your consideration for for the extension. And I just wanted you to hear that, but also the applicant hear that so they can um know exactly what I would recommend you be looking at when they come back.
When was the last extension granted? Do you have that information as the applicant?
Yeah, I think it was um, I think it was actually a year ago. I think it was February of uh twenty.
I think it's also in the letters that are included in the proposal.
I think it was February twenty twenty two.
Was the last request.
Right.
And that was for
So should we make a a motion to table it or is it, is this discussion sufficient?
I think m- make a motion to table it, but put a date certain on. So you know, put it to the next month's meeting.
Yeah.
So you don't have to make a motion to pull off, just a motion to adjourn to the March meeting, which should be March fifteenth, I think, right? Four weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone opposed to that?
I mean, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second it. Uh, so we'll move to a vote, Bill. James. Oh, sorry, uh saw the nod, yeah.
Yes.
Suzanne, I know about yes as well. So we'll see you again next month.
Okay, um, and we'll be prepared as as advised to to address those points directly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bill, you want to keep meeting or?
No, 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 I'm ready to go.